The City of Riverbank, River City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have provided for us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the privilege that we have to come, Heavenly Father, and to be in this chamber, Heavenly Father, with this leader, the leaders that you've placed in office. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless them, that you grant them wisdom to make the decisions that they have to make, which is best suited for the City of Riverbank. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the staff, and we ask that you bless them, be with them. Be with each one in this congregation or in this building today, Heavenly Father. We ask that you lift them up, give them strength, wisdom, and understanding, and let them know that all great things come from you. We ask that you be with this great United States of America that you've given to us. We ask that you bless it, bless it tonight. Bless our troops, Heavenly Father, the men and women that are serving in the armed forces, Heavenly Father. Lift them up, give them extra strength tonight, and we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District 2, Sima Fossey.
Yes, here.
Council Authority Member District 3, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 4, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Louise Udiyeb.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There will be no changes to the agenda, but there will be a correction at the time. Any conflict of interest from any Authority Member, Council, or staff, please indicate now. Any public comment? No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and with the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes per person. You may only speak once and cannot... You cannot yield time to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the Board or the Council. I see we have public comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Leanne Jones Cruz and Chloe Cruz. We just wanted to come and thank you so much for opening the dog park. It is fabulous. It is a great addition to the Jacob Myers Park. If you haven't been down there, it is beautiful. Sue, thank you so much. It is being used quite a bit by a bunch of residents. I was down there today, and there are several people down there, and it is fabulous. So if you haven't got a chance to go check it out, you should. Chloe, thanks you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I knew we were going to the dogs. We move to the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, wave readings; Item 3B, approval of December 10th, 2019, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority minutes; Item 3B1, approval of January 14th, 2020, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority minutes; Item 3C, out-of-state travel request for Michael Rydell, Public Works Director, to attend the California Water Environmental Association Annual Conference on March 31st through the 1st, 2020, in Reno, Nevada; Item 3D, award bid for the parking and trail improvements at Jacob Myers Park Project 2, Ross F. Carroll, Inc., and authorize execution of future change orders; Item 3E, resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Cal Home Program, the execution of a standard agreement, and if selected for such funding, execution of any amendments thereto and any related documents necessary to participate in the Cal Home Program. Is there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Is there any from the public wishing to discuss the consent calendar? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Council for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Udiyeb.
Yes.
Mayor Chair Brian.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2020-001, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 153, zoning of the Riverbank Municipal Code by repealing in their entirety Section 153.280, intent and purpose through Section 153.285, specific requirements for certain zones under subsection signs and substituting them with a new Section 153.280 through 153.285.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this is a second reading. We discussed this at length last meeting. Essentially, in a nutshell, what the code amendment does is it expands the allowance for electronic signage into other commercial areas of town, whereas the original code allowed them just in the downtown specific plan area. So this will allow other public and semi-public signs in those other areas, which we're already working on. So happy to answer any questions or go through that again if you'd like. Otherwise, remains the same as the last meeting.
Does the Council have any questions?
None.
Does the public have any questions? Bring it back for consideration.
I move that we approve Item 4.1.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on Item 4.1.
Council Members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udiyeb.
Yes.
Mayor Brian.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, first reading and introduction by title only of a proposed ordinance approving a development agreement by and between the City of Riverbank and Elevations Plus LLC, a California corporation doing business as Elevations. And in this, some of the changes have been made, in case you did not receive it. This is not the... It'll be... The second reading will take place in the next City Council meeting on February 11th, 2020, not today.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Planning and Building Manager, Donna Kenny, will provide this report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. As stated, this is a development agreement for Elevations LLC, which is located at Third and Atchison on the northeast corner. So this was heard by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission with two resolutions. The first one, Resolution 022, recommends approval of the DA to the City Council, and with Resolution 023, they approved the conditional use permit. Here's an aerial of the site as it looked when it was a tow yard. The Google Earth doesn't have any updated aerials at this time. As you can see, the building, there is some room behind the building and on the side, but most of the parking would be in the front. Atchison is across the bottom, and Third Street is on the left of the screen. Here's what the front elevation looked like. The building has actually gone through architectural and site plan review already through the Planning Commission for a retail shell. They have pulled some building permits, and they have recently been working on the structure. Here's the site plan. As you can see, that they do have conceptual landscaping. If this project is approved, they will be required to submit landscape and irrigation plans for review. The building is broken down into retail area... I think you can see it better on this one. Retail areas, storage areas, and office areas. There's a side elevation, and the front elevation is at the bottom there. So you can see that most of those roll-up doors would be swapped out for windows. As with our other cannabis DAs, the term for this is three years with public benefit payments, and they are proposing medicinal and adult-use dispensary with delivery. So the public benefit, which goes towards safety features in the city, is set up over six-month time periods. The first six months in business, they would be responsible for either flat rates of $10,000 or 5% of the grocery receipts. The second half of the year would be $15,000 or 5% of the grocery receipts, and then to the end of the term, it would be $20,000 or 5% of the grocery receipts. Oh, I had changed. This is an earlier version. That is $20,000 at the bottom there. So the DA findings, the Planning Commission found that it is consistent with the general plan, that it would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and/or it wouldn't affect development or property values. It's consistent with government code as far as development agreements are concerned, and it does contain a legal description of the property. These are the five findings that the Planning Commission had to make in order to approve or recommend approval of the DA. So the DA, as you know, regulates the business, and the conditional use permit regulates the actual building and property itself, and contains items like hours of construction, exterior lighting. It does contain a hold harmless agreement. It also talks about loitering and the need for security guards, and there has been a security plan submitted to the city that has been reviewed. So when I mentioned general plan consistency, the regulation of a cannabis activity should be consistent with the following guiding principle of the general plan, that our city should be safe and healthy for all our residents. The project qualifies for the categorical exemption for SEQA because it is an existing facility that involves no expansion of the building or use. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to take public comment and adopt the ordinance approving the development agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
What was the reasoning to have the DA term three years for them, but for Flavors it was five? What's the reasoning for that?
Well, that's a good question. Maybe, I don't know. At this point, I don't know.
You know...
I thought we discussed the three.
The applicants are present. When we had that negotiation, I don't recall the term specifically being discussed beyond what a standard one was. So perhaps it was a matter of the form that was provided that was used, but all of our other DAs have been five-year terms.
So if we wanted to make it five, we could?
Yes.
Okay.
In your staff report in the agreement, it says $18,000. You said the $20,000. Where is that in writing?
Well, when I reviewed the documents this morning, and I had revised them this past week.
It's not... Look up.
It's not there.
It's page three of six, Mayor, on the report.
That one actually says 18 as well.
It does, in my book. I mean, I may not have an updated development agreement.
It's on mine there, too.
Well, I have to apologize.
We'll consider that after a public comment, after a public hearing.
Thank you.
Any further before we go to a public hearing? Thank you, Donna. This is a public hearing?
I am a longtime downtown resident, and I did attend the Planning Commission meeting. Did not get any answers, so I'm hoping I will get some answers this time. One of the issues that I brought up is that that is not just a towing. Was it not just used for towing? Before, it was used by settlers. It belonged to, was it Wharton's, I believe, that had a gas station, or a Texaco gas station on that site for a long time? I don't know if the tanks are still under there. I'm sure there's contamination in that ground that has not been addressed, and I think that should come into the environmental issue. There is a clone room in these plants. There's nothing, no information on it. My understanding is that they are going to divide plants, and they don't call it growing. They call it cloning, but they'll be stored and they'll be growing in there until they sell them, and they will sell the plants from the dispensary. From what I could gather from the state, they're kind of confused as to which, who has the regulations or what they are, but it seems, appears to be, that they're leaving it up to the local agency to come up with the regulations on that. I feel very strongly that the Council should come up with rules and regulations on cloning and selling marijuana plants out of a dispensary before you allow it to happen. You have... Your code now doesn't cover cloning at all. You allow six plants for homegrowing, but what's to stop somebody from going and getting six, and then go back and get another six, and then they clone those, and pretty soon they've got more than the dispensary does? And if there's no regulations covering how that works and what they can and can't do, they're going to be using water and light in there, so they're going to be light plants. And if I just heard Donna write, those documents that you're voting on tonight have been revised, but they haven't been made public, and this is a public hearing, so the public should have... be able to look at those revised documents before you vote on them. I think that's what a public hearing is all about. But I would strongly urge you to look at these rulings for cloning and selling marijuana plant, because once you do it for one, you're going to have to do it for the other dispensaries. You need to have set rulings for this. This is only two blocks from the other one, so it's pretty close. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I address that?
No.
Okay.
No further public comment? A closed public comment? Bring it back. My question is, I know that there is a guidelines for clone rooms from the state.
Yes, this topic did come up both in a conversation with Ms. Halbert, as well as in the Planning Commission meeting. The clones are similar to bringing in products to, like, the Target plant area or the Walmart plant area. We're talking about flats of plants that are small, that are cloned elsewhere. The clones are brought in, and they are only kept alive with light and water until our citizens or someone comes in and purchases their six plants. So they are not cloning on the property. They are not raising these plants to clone. They just come in and out as fast as they can sell them.
Is there any limit to the size of those plants?
I believe the state does have some...
Three-inch?
That's possible, that that's the number.
Okay.
But I would also like to comment that I'm positive, almost positive, that Flavors is a three-year DA, because as I was preparing the staff reports for their annual review, I realized that this next year, we're going to have to renegotiate, because by December, their DA is going to be complete.
Okay.
So I'm positive it's three years.
That kind of complots with my memory, because Council may recall, that was our first approval of one. I think the idea was to have a shorter term, because we didn't really know how it was going to work in practice.
Okay.
So I'll just make a comment. The comment about it being two blocks away from another business, I think we should be treating it like any other business. If that were the case, then we would revisit other businesses like Garcia's Market and La Chiquita being only two blocks away, Riverbank Dental and Suave Dental only being two blocks away, literally right here on Third Street. So let the... I think it's a business decision, let the market speak, and I'm excited for the site plan. I think it's going to... Them investing on the corner of Third, I mean, just drive down 108, and what do you see? See abandoned buildings, burned-down buildings. It's one of the first impressions for a lot of people when they come through, so I'm for this.
There is one more thing could I address?
Yes.
That when the applicant did apply, he submitted a Phase 1 environmental report that showed that there had been cleanup.
I'm still not sure that I want three marijuana plants, and I'm not sure that the citizens want three marijuana dispensaries, especially one that's so close to the other. The Riverbank has plenty of space. I'm not sure why there wasn't a different spot picked, so that there would be some variety in different sections of town, but I don't know that I want a third. That's just my opinion.
Couple of things. One, correct, because I may be remembering wrong, but don't we have, if they're going to buy plants to grow in Riverbank, they're limited to six, but don't they have to have a... the okay from City Hall and a permit, you know?
Correct.
So how are we going to handle that, you know, per se, if they're local and they go in there and buy it? Do they already have to have the permit, or...
Well, that issue hasn't come up, but I think that it's not a bad idea that we sort of reach out to however many dispensaries that end up being in Riverbank and give them the information on how to file their permit for their personal home indoor grow, just so it's real simple. And the process that Donna and I kind of came up with was really very simple. It's about, I think it's a one-page document. And what does it cost on, 20 bucks, or...
Well, it's a one-page document. It's $1.25 a year, and it involves an inspection by our building inspector, only for health and safety, for mold and for electrical issues.
So the cost was really all an inspection by a building inspector? So it's actually not a bad idea to add, maybe as a condition of approval, that that information has to be given out if people are purchasing plants.
And one other comment I want to make, and this was before Louise was on the Council, but when we did the dispensaries, there was a lot of concern about downtown becoming the major area for marijuana. A lot of citizens were concerned about that. So that's something that we have to consider, too, because we told them that we weren't going to do that. So other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
As I have spoken to my constituents regarding this issue of marijuana, they're not in agreement that we should have a third dispensary. And I... I mean, we're all for growth of our city and businesses that are going to give us economic growth, and also that are going to provide a service to our residents, but I just don't agree that Riverbank is... I just think Riverbank is too small for a third dispensary. And to be in that location, we already have one that is, you know, already kind of like in the same vicinity, and so what is that going to do for their business? To me, it probably will just shut them down. They don't... They won't survive eventually. Thank you.
Don't we have two barber shops right down the road here, one across the street from the other? And then we have two right on Atchison also? We have another one right over here. We're going to put the same restrictions on there. As to citizens, they used to be upset, and then after Flavors was so successful, those who were against it have come up and apologized to me, and I have not heard a negative, except for, "I don't want it down in my neighborhood," or "I don't want it next or near my business." One would be, is offering services kind of like a spa. The other is not. So we could call one a collective spa and the other a dispensary. We are in a capitalistic society, and we should let capitalism dictate, you know, if a business succeeds or not. There are a supermarket thriving, a save mark came in, took away a lot of the business, and that's the way the market goes. And then Save Mark built another Save Mark, and it took businesses away from their own save mark. So that's the way I think the businesses should be regulated. As to why people are against the cannabis, it's not a marijuana shop. As to why people are against the cannabis, it's not a marijuana shop, it's a cannabis. And there's a whole differences in that. But Jiffy Lube went out of business because of other businesses. And if a business goes out because of another cannabis dispensary, that's the capitalistic We'll see how this plays out. Is there any other comments before I call for a motion? Okay, no more comment. Do we have consideration for 5.1?
I'll make a motion to approve 5.1 with the change that Cal had stated.
I will second it.
Barbara Martinez?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Fossey?
No.
Vice Mayor Odiében?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion fails, 2-3.
Item 5.2, First Reading and Introduction by Title Only of a Proposed Ordinance Amending Title 11 Business Regulation by Adding Chapter 126 Hemp Cultivation to the Riverbank Municipal Code to Prohibit the Outdoor Cultivation of Hemp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, an item that was sort of passed down to us from the state of California with regard to outdoor hemp cultivation, and there's a lot to it ironically. So Donna's going to step you through that and why we are recommending a ban on, on that within city limits.
Good evening again. This is a outdoor hemp cultivation ban. So California passed the Industrial Hemp Farming Act after the federal government decided to allow the growth of hemp. So this was signed into law in 2018, but it takes the state a while to figure out where it's going with this kind of thing. It does authorize the cultivation of industrial hemp in California, and they will issue permits on a tenth of an acre and larger, which is the size of a small city lot, about 4,200 square feet. And although, whether or not the city would want to regulate indoor hemp growth, the state prohibits that you grow, that the state prohibits growing industrial hemp for personal So our municipal code does not expressly address the outdoor cultivation of industrial hemp, although we have a permissive zoning ordinance, which essentially prohibits it, it is not listed as a permitted use in any zone. The ordinance clarifies the city's position on hemp to the county, and it also provides easy access to the information for our citizens. They won't have to go to a state or county website to find out more about industrial We believe that this proposed ordinance is consistent with the guiding principle of the general plan, that our city should be safe and healthy for our residents. We currently do not allow the outdoor cultivation of cannabis, partly for safety reasons, partly for the smell. And to the uneducated eye, hemp and cannabis look the same. They aren't the same though, where cannabis might cost, I don't know, $300, $400 an ounce. The profit margin for hemp is only about $150 to $200 per acre. So you aren't going to see a lot of people wanting to grow it in their backyards or grow it commercially unless they have the equipment and the room to do a large-scale operation to make that profit. Since this is an ordinance, an actual project per sequa, it does have no potential for resulting in a physical change in the environment directly or ultimately, so it does qualify as an exemption. It does have a relationship with our strategic plan as well. We have a quality of life goal in our strategic plan, and we are to support efforts to improve our quality. And keeping hemp and cannabis from growing outdoors does reduce the odor and improve So there are three different ways that you could make this determination. You could introduce the ordinance for its first reading, which would enact a citywide prohibition of outdoor hemp cultivation. You could continue the introduction to the next city council meeting if you feel there should be some changes made to this ordinance. Or you could reject the ordinance and then direct, direct staff, oh, that would regulate the outdoor, direct staff to draft an ordinance regulating the outdoor cultivation of hemp, if that's the direction you would like to go. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions before public hearing? This is a public hearing? I see no public comment. I close the public hearing, bring it back. Donna?
Yes.
Hemp has a very low odor comparison to marijuana, cannabis.
Not true. I grew up in Nebraska where hemp and cannabis grow wild, and I personally don't think I could tell the difference either by smell or by looking at it, unless it's been professionally cultivated the way they do cannabis.
There was a, there is a small farm, about 20 acres, that is growing hemp right now. And you can't smell that.
Must be new strains, rather than just wild.
And hemp is used for soaps?
Yes.
Conditioners?
Textiles.
Textiles, yes. Ropes for the U.S. Navy and their ships? Okay, so we're banning it, or we want to ban it. Okay. Any comments or questions from the council before we consider it?
Just to be clear, there's an allowance for a business if they wanted to do that, correct?
Not to grow it outside, no.
No, not outside, indoors.
No. Indoors, there is nothing that would prohibit industrial hemp indoors. Well, personally, but industrially, you could.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion for option one.
I'll second it.
We have a motion for option one and a second on item 5.2.
Council members. Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odiében?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, First Reading and Introduction by Title Only of Proposed Ordinance Amending Title 15 Land Use, Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations, Section 150.01 through 150.16, Adoption of Standard Codes and Adoption by Reference, the 2019 California Administrative Building Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, Existing Building, Historic Building, Fire and Green Building Standards.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, one of our yearly building code updates. There's really only a couple of minor, minor changes, and Donna can walk you through those if you'd like. They're fairly boring in my opinion, but Donna, you want to share a little bit about those?
Yes, this is basically a housekeeping item, so I didn't do a PowerPoint for it. The last time I came before you with this item was when we adopted the 2016 building code. Every three years, the building code gets updated. We've already purchased our copies, we're already required to use it since January 1st of 2020, and so it's basically a housekeeping matter to put it in our municipal code. So that's all we're asking to do, is to take what's there and then change the 2016s to 2019s.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments? This is public hearing, I opened the public hearing for item 5.3. I see no public comments, I close public hearing, bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion, we approve item 5.3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second for item 5.3 for the first reading.
Council members. Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odiében?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
New business, item 6.1, Proz Consulting Grade, Update on the Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment Survey Results.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of work has gone into a Parks Master Plan that Proz Consulting is working on, on behalf of the city, and they were here to update you a few months ago to discuss the research they were doing with the community on what the community wants and desires, and they've sent out those surveys and received results back. And Sue and our consultant are going to step you through what, what we found out.
Mayor members of the council, I'm excited about the survey results. I think it's, it's just definitely something I've been looking forward to. So Michael Svetz is our consultant with Proz Consulting, and he will present the survey results as well as kind of give you an update on where we're at as far as the community-wide park master plan is, is going.
Thank you, Mayor, council, very much. Happy New Year to all. It's probably a little too late to be saying that to anybody, since we're about a month in. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you all or present some findings to you all is probably more the, the best, best way to say it. We had, last time I had presented to you, we kind of gave you an overview of what the process is. And just as a quick reminder, the nutshell is, is that first third of the project is really about understanding how the community wants to experience its parks and recreation system. Second step is kind of more of the technical components of it, inventory assessment, and then the third is when we start getting into recommendations. So tonight, I really want to share with you the statistically valid survey results. As mentioned last time, this is something that is kind of a cornerstone. It's data, it's defensible, so hopefully you all like numbers, because you're going to see a lot of them as we go through this. So just quickly, we had administered this survey last fall, pretty much October, November, December. Our target was to have about 375 returned, and you all exceeded that with 421. So kudos to the community with regards to actually being responsive to the survey going forward. One thing we like to show, and from a statistically valid survey, there's two kind of really key components to it. One is to ensure that it's demographically balanced, but the other is to ensure that it's geographically balanced, so that you have the ability to basically know that folks throughout the entire community had responded to it. So as you could see, where you have greater density is where you have more dots and where surveys were returned. Where you have less density is where you have fewer surveys returned. So we're really confident and happy with the fact that we have a survey that is geographically balanced. From a demographic perspective, this is just kind of a pie chart to let you know, the only people that could actually respond to a survey, they had to be 18 and older. But as, as every question was asked, it is you and members of your household. And so we wanted to show that we have really, really good balance in terms of distribution across all age segments. That very much actually matches up with the, the age segmentation of your community, your present community today. Another big concern of us was, of course, recognizing that you have a large Hispanic population in your community. So the chart to the left is the breakdown of folks that had Hispanic origin in them that responded to the survey, 55%. You're currently at about 56%. So we're pretty much right on target there to ensure that the, the strong, you know, subset that you have from Hispanic population was very much represented by the survey as well. So first set is advocacy. So we wanted to find out how, how people felt about parks and recreation. And of course, parks and recreation in many cases, to people is, is a very touchy-feely thing. And so what we did is we asked them a number of statements around the benefits that parks and recreation provides to the community. All but the very, very, very last one had at least 50% of strongly agree or agree. The last one there is promote tourism to the city and region. You did have 45% of folks that either strongly agreed or agreed, but simply right now, you don't have a lot of tourism associated with parks and recreation, so it's not something that people are familiar with. But it's really strong to recognize that of all of the other statements, more than half of your community agreed with them, either strongly or generally. Another key component or an offshoot of that is what are the three benefits that are most important to your community? The first was makes Riverbank a more desirable place to live. Second was actually to help reduce crime and keep kids out of trouble. And third, improves my physical health and fitness. So those were the three benefits that people saw the, the greatest. The actual benefit that people chose first and foremost, more than any other choice, was actually improves my physical health and fitness. And you will see how we tie this back to some of the other key findings going forward. So another set is park, park and facility visitation and condition. So what we wanted to do is find out how frequently folks or visit your parks and recreation system. So we asked them a number of different, you know, locations. Do they visit parks or trails, pools, community center, gymnasiums, and so on and so forth? So the national benchmark for visiting a park over the last year is about 76%. When we add up all of those figures there, you're at about 68%. So you do have a little bit of room from an improvement perspective. However, and I will make this statement now and I will connect it later, one of the desires that your community wants out of parks and recreation, this is Dog Park, and the fact that you just added one, and it just opened, and it opened just after this survey was done, I think those numbers actually, if you had, if you did this again at the end of 2020, those numbers would actually be higher. But I'll, I'll bring that, I'll bring that full circle in a bit. So of the folks that had visited parks, we wanted to understand how they rated the condition of your park system. And so whether it was a teen center, community center, scout hall, parks, community gymnasium, trails, community pool, the only one that didn't meet the national benchmark of rating it as excellent of 29% was the community gymnasium, and that was still at 25%. So your community is rating your park system and the condition of it in, in, along the lines of the, the national benchmark of 29% excellent. This is a testament to your investment and reinvestment in your park system, but it's also a testament to your park maintenance division as part of parks and recreation, that they're taking care of the parks at a standard that meets a high level of excellence. The other thing I think is really important is to recognize that we always look at the excellent part, but you also have a lot of orange there as well, which indicates good. So really, the, the only one that I think you have some room to work on is the community pool, but I also know that a Prop 68 grant was submitted for that just last year, so there's recognition that reinvestment in that pool is needed. So reasons why people haven't visited parks or trails or facilities, not aware, and I'll tie this back, that was the number one. Number two was don't feel safe using parks and trails, and number three was lack of features. I'll tie it back to the not awareness in a second, but just recognize that these are the typical answers that we get across the country, and these are very much in line what we see. There's always going to be concern in public spaces with a certain segment of your, any percentage of your population that just don't feel safe out in them. So, but those numbers are not that far off of what we see nationally. So next set is program participation and quality. So we asked people if they had participated in a recreation program over the last 12 months. 23% said yes, 77% said no. So you have some room to work with regards to this, but that's also why we're doing this project, is to figure out where there are opportunities for improvement. National benchmark is- National benchmark is thirty-three percent, so one out of every three across the country typically participate in Parks and Recreation programs offered by municipalities. But of the folks that did participate in your programs, they're rating your programs, the quality of those programs as above the national average in terms of quality. So, kudos to Julia and Sue in terms of being able to, whatever you're doing, you're doing really, really well. So, thirty-eight percent are rating your quality of your programs as excellent, and another forty-seven percent are rating them as good. So, if I do my math, that's eighty-five percent of your community that's participated in programs has rated them at least good. So, reasons why people haven't participated in programs. Number one, don't know what's offered. Fifty-one percent. That's a big number. By comparison to national benchmark, it's about sixteen percentage points higher. Too busy, not interested is forty-six percent. Again, that's another big number. So, part of where I think you're going to see where this is going is that there are things that we need to do to make sure that people are aware of it, but too busy, not interested, usually the connection to that is simply that you're maybe not offering the things that they're most interested in, because I've always found people that have made time to participate in things that they're interested in, and so that's the connection we need to make with this. So, regarding the I don't know what's offered, what we wanted to find out was how do people learn about Parks and Recreation in Riverbank? The very, very, very top one is friends and neighbors. The rest of them, the activity guide, the city website, banners around the city, Facebook, flyers, those are all things that you control. So, the problem with the friends and neighbors component is we've always played, we've all played that telephone game, right? We know how the message gets diluted. The other thing about friends and neighbors is sometimes you find out about things after they've occurred, and so at that point, they can't participate because they've already, that opportunity to participate passed. So, then we asked folks not just how they learn, but we wanted to ask them how they prefer to learn. So, a couple of things to point out. Emails is at eleven percent right now in terms of how they learn, and friends and neighbors is at forty-three percent, the number one way. They prefer to learn on all of the things that you control. So, the emails jumped up from eleven percent of how they learn to twenty-eight percent of how they would prefer to learn, and friends and neighbors went from number one to almost two-thirds down the list. So, what this does is it kind of gives you an understanding that instead of trying to do everything from a marketing perspective, put your eggs in those top three or four or five baskets, so to speak, where you can direct those resources, you can control the message, and you'll have an opportunity to increase that level of participation, especially since the number one reason that people didn't participate was they weren't aware. This gives you some guidelines in terms of how to create a marketing program around Parks and Recreation that gives you a better shot at getting people to be aware of what it is that you're doing. That's number one. I gotta know. So, facility amenities and needs. We asked several questions, but I really wanted to focus on two. The first is what is the, what are the most important park amenities or facilities? And I think you're going to see a common theme, and this came out in the focus groups significantly as well. Trails, small neighborhood parks, and then more trails, and then your off-leash dog park. So, soon do, without even having to do a master plan that you needed to put a dog park in. And then the fifth one there is covered picnic areas. So, two of your top three are trails in terms of importance, and small neighborhood parks are important as well. This ties back to the conversation about safety. The reason that people like small neighborhood parks is that they're typically close to home. And so, if you have an opportunity to send your kids or you're going to participate in parks just generally in terms of visitation, the things that came up during the focus group and stakeholder is reinforced here that small neighborhood parks have significant value for you. Trails, of course, off-leash dog parks. The second thing we wanted to ask was what are your highest unmet needs? So, it's great for something to be important, it's great for something to be needed, but what are those things that folks want you to do more of? And you have consistency, you have soft surface trails. Thing that jumps up significantly, though, is indoor exercise facility. This ties back to one of the big benefits that people had identified that Parks and Recreation provides to them, which is improves my physical fitness and wellness. Third was covered picnic areas, fourth again was trails, fifth was trails. So, I think you kind of see a theme here with regards to the type of facilities that folks are looking for. So, we also wanted to ask folks about programs. So, what are the most important programs? You have three that jump right off the top. Number one is programs for folks fifty-five and older. Number two was exercise programs. And number three was community special events. Everything else kind of starts to really, I don't want to say tail off, but those are the three most important areas of programming that people want. So, again, same exercise, what are the highest unmet needs? Fitness and wellness programs was number one. Programs and services for adults fifty-five and older was two, and community special events was three. So, you have synergy between what people are identifying as important, but also where they have the highest unmet needs or what they want you to do more of. And so, there's obviously some opportunity here. If people are finding things important and you're not doing enough of them, it kind of rises right to the top to say, what are the things you need to focus on going forward when it comes to programs and services? So, we also asked a series of questions around special events, knowing and thinking that your community was going to respond as, with community events being important, but also wanting to do more of them. So, these are the things that people most participated in. The Cheese and Wine Festival was number one, and then your Christmas Parade Downtown was number two. Jacob Myers Park Concert Series was three, Hayride at Jacob Myers Park was four. So, how would you rate the overall quality? This is very much in line with the, actually, this is less than the general recreation program. So, you do have some wiggle room to improve the quality of your special events, which people rated separately than your general programs that are put out there. But again, not to say that it's terrible, you still have seventy percent rating them as either excellent or good, you just have some wiggle room in terms of moving that excellent number up. And then in terms of concepts, so we wanted to ask specifically, what did they want to see? If you want more special events, they're important and you want more of them, then give us some ideas around what you want those special events to look like. Food event was number one, entertainment was number two, cultural celebration was number three, and then special events downtown was number four. And I think that, and I kind of explained this to staff when we were running through this last week, you can put a food event together with entertainment and a cultural celebration and hold it downtown and check all four boxes all at once. So, it's not as if these need to be standalone things. You have a way to interface them into one or two or three special events, but to focus them downtown. As far as public support, so we didn't want this just to be a wish list, right? So, what are they, what is the public willing to kind of fund? What do they think are the most important improvements? So, taking, in terms of level of support, taking care of what you already have are the top two. Take care of your parks, your existing parks, improve existing trails. Number three, develop new trails. Number four, add trails in your existing parks. So, you can kind of see where all of this works out. The other thing that's really important to recognize is that the number one most participated in activity from a fitness perspective across the country is walking for exercise. Almost one-third of the country walks for exercise regularly. So, you can see then making that connection to people saying that it improves my physical health and wellness, and you can see that people want exercise programs or services. Trails has, the development of trails have a way to tying back to what people find as great benefits as well as what they want to do. As far as what folks are most willing to fund, so what will you pay for? Adding trails in existing parks, taking care of your own parks, developing new trails, improving the existing trail system. The fifth one there, you've already checked the box on. Not to say that you don't need more of them, but you've gone a long way by adding that off-leash dog park at Jacob Myers. And then the overall level of satisfaction. So, you have fifteen percent of your community saying that they're very satisfied, and you have another thirty-nine percent saying somewhat satisfied. I think you can recognize that you have things that people want you to do more of that they're also deeming to be very important. So, the purpose of the master plan is to recognize that you can't, you don't have the resources to meet everybody's needs. But what are the priorities of your community that are going to want them to, or want them to use your parks more and to use your programs more, is to provide the things that they find most important to them, but also where they have a lot of unmet need. You do that, and these numbers start to go up significantly. Most communities that we work with across the country that have a very satisfied level of whether it's twenty-seven percent or thirty percent or forty percent, they also don't show a lot of high unmet needs. And so, that's the connection here between being very satisfied and at a national level or being a little bit below. So, we have some work to do, but that's okay. It gives you some room for improvement. So, just to summarize, community needs take a whole bunch of information, trend information, the qualitative input that we receive from focus groups and stakeholders, which really helped to tee up the questions on the survey as well as the survey. And I'm not going to try to read this, but instead of trying to categorize these from one to thirty or one to twenty, we identify them as high, medium, and low. So, the things that are at the high end of the spectrum are things that people find to be most important, but also they want you to do more of. So, what this simply means is that from a program's perspective or a service's perspective, this is where your community wants you to focus. The things at the bottom, though, are not necessarily means that things that you don't do or you stop doing. It means that if you're not doing it now, don't spend a lot of resources on it because you're not going to have a lot of participation in it, or if you are doing it, continue to do it, but do it at the level that you're currently doing it at. So, you don't need to invest more resources into it. Same exercise with regards to facility amenities and so on and so forth. Again, I'll just use the low end of the spectrum, gymnasiums. It's not that people don't value your gymnasium or that you should go and tear it down, it just means that you don't need to build another one. The things at the high end of the spectrum, of course, the small neighborhood parks, picnic areas, trails, trails, trails. And so, to summarize kind of the emerging issues, take care of what we already have, trails, trails, trails. Neighborhood parks are important, and that desire to have something close to home, particularly from a safety perspective. Community special events are appreciated, and folks do want more of them. Indoor exercise is important and needed, and this is probably the one that jumps out that makes everybody cringe because that requires the right spaces, and indoor spaces are certainly more expensive than outdoor spaces, not just to build, but also to manage and maintain. Dog parks are desired. Create and continue to create advocacy and awareness through the methods that we showed, and then, of course, come up with the financial strategies to support the highest priorities of your community. So, our next steps, we are completing the park inventory and assessment over the next couple of weeks. We are then going to do an internal park-by-park improvement workshop. So, what this means is we're going to look at every one of your parks and your facilities and say, what do you need to do with that over the next ten years? And you'll basically get a mini park improvement plan for each one of your parks in your system. And then levels of service, which I explained last time, is really how much do you need to develop or how much do you need to look at? We recognize you've got growth on the way. So, these level of service standards start to help to provide those guidelines necessary to support not just your existing residents, but your future residents as well. And then we'll equity, we'll do the level of service, but we'll do it from an equity perspective to ensure that you've got accessibility to your park system in all different parts of your community. Questions, concerns, comments, suggestions?
Any questions or comments from the council?
Just a great presentation, Michael, and I do look forward to those workshops and seeing it, and then just anticipating the changes when our electric sign comes out, being able to show what's being offered and the location of those parks to help improve those numbers, but overall, great presentation. Thank you.
I'm just surprised that we're so much in line with the national averages.
Well, I mean, I'm not. I mean, I think that when I spoke with folks before the survey went out, I was pleasantly surprised with the condition of your park system. You do have, but you also have some improvement to make. So, I mean, you don't do a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and usually the recommendation is not just keep doing what you're doing. There's always opportunities for improvement.
Okay, any comments from the public? All right. Well, thank you very much, Michael.
You're very welcome. Thank you all. Have a great rest of the month and heading into February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three days. Five-year financial forecast, item six point two.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we formulated this agenda, I probably wouldn't have followed Michael on the presentation, because this is going to really, it's going to be like following the Rolling Stones or something. So, my counterpart, the Assistant City Manager, and I have worked on, it's been primarily her labor, to put together a five-year financial forecast, which has been, become a practice here at the city, especially during and post-recession. We, to put it in perspective before I get into the detail, a couple of years ago, the council and staff were looking at a reserve level that was going to drop from over ten percent, thanks, Norma, to seven percent, to two percent, to no percent. And what that would end up doing for staffing and services to the public was something that I think everybody on the dais here was very concerned about. Fortunately, we have had a real rebound from a couple perspectives in the last two fiscal years. One is from a cost control perspective, another is from a business slash productivity perspective, both with regard to our retail and also a number of other projects that council has approved that have really changed the scope of our budget. And so, I'm going to step you through our five-year forecast, which is going to show you some things that are really exciting and then some things that are fairly concerning. So, when Maricela put this together, she uses historical trends based on sort of what we've seen from actuals that come in at the end of budget years. We track the economy at a federal and state level in terms of growth, and then obviously our internal information, we know what our negotiated labor contracts are going to cost, we know what our CalPERS projections are, we generally know our future development plans specifically Crossroads West, and then we know our strategic plan and some of the things that council has prioritized, both in terms of cost and upside in terms of revenue. So, here's the most important chart, I'm going to stand on this for a moment. The first line, you're going to see reserve levels, and that number, that three-point three milli- And that number, that $3.3 million number is the largest reserve. I was talking with Maricela about this earlier today. She's been at the city, I think almost 20 years, and in her mind is the largest reserve that Riverbank has ever had, either by percentage or gross amount. Part of that is control of costs. The staff here and the management team have really done a great job controlling costs and making sure that, that we're, we're watching what we spend. And then frankly, revenues. We have seen massive increases in sales tax and good steady increases in property tax. You'll see that the expenditures that have been projected over the next five years are, and I'll get to some of the assumptions here in a second on that. Actually, let me back up to revenues. Revenues over the next five years, we take a fairly conservative approach because we're very concerned in overestimating and then being in a position where, you know, council chooses a policy on how they'd like to allocate their reserves. And if it turns out that we're off the mark by five or more percent, big decisions have to be made in terms of cuts and we'd like to avoid that if at all possible. On the expenditure side, the next couple of years, we have labor contracts with both of our, our labor groups. And with some luck, we'll have a new sheriff's contract here in the next couple of months. But we generally know what in the short term our costs are. And then over time, what Maricela has done is we don't, we don't ever assume any additional labor, labor costs in years where we don't know what could happen. But we do know what other operational increases we'll see, power, insurance, all of those sort of set costs that, that always raise over time. The most important line in this entire chart is the surplus deficit. You'll see operating deficits this fiscal year through 23, 24. You'll notice though, that in this current fiscal year, council has authorized some funds to be used on capital projects. That would be the community center, kitchen renovation, and some roofing projects. In fact, one's happening right now across the street at City Hall South. And so the structural deficit for this current year is really not all that concerning because some of that is money that you intentionally spent down in your reserve in order to get some of those projects done. Then you see fiscal years 21 through basically the end of 24, a steady increase in the structural deficit getting to almost three and a half, $350,000 by 23, 24, which would bring, at static levels, bring our reserve down to about 15%. Your set reserve policy that you amended a few meetings ago is 13%. So you're still above where you ideally like to, to be. So this chart shows revenues and expenditures, projections, and then you can see the reserve levels on, in that little red line, which shows a steady decline as expenses occur. And we're going to talk about why that's the case. There's a very, there's one reason, you all know it, and it, I'll get to in just a moment, but it's, you know, surprise, surprise, it's purse unfunded liability payments. Here is this, this information and a full report we provided and available for the community if you'd like to really dive into the nitty gritty detail of the budget. But you'll see here that these are the various revenue sources that we calculate in the general fund. And we have used common inflators based on our experience over the past years. Now, this chart means nothing. If we go through a slowdown or recession in 2021, you know, all bets are off at that point. We'll probably have to rethink all of our numbers. But if things continue generally along the same lines, this is what we would, we would be looking at about $11 million in revenues by 2024. Expenditures, very similar. If they're, depending on what happens with labor negotiations, when our current contracts are up and depending on any changes to our sheriff's contract, obviously these numbers could increase. But in general, we think we're going to be in this ballpark, which is, as you see, just over $11 million. Okay, most important slide. So you've seen this before. This, this is actually clipped out of that CalPERS actuarial report that we had put together by our financial advisors. So you keep in mind that that 24, 25, and then into fiscal year 26 is where you start to really see the, the massive growth in our operating deficit. The reason is, is if you look on, in 2019, we're in roughly over $600,000 in a, per year in purse unfunded liability payments. And you see essentially a $400,000 increase by the end of 2026. That's why this little triangle is our concerned space. After that, yes, the payments are still very high, but you can see the increases are more incremental. And that's easy. We can budget for those and we can, you know, make adjustments to our organization to be able to pay for those appropriately. What's very difficult for us to deal with on a year-over-year basis is what we're looking at in 2020 through 2025, where you have some years where you may have a UAL payment that is $150,000 more than it was the previous year. So once we get past year 2026, it becomes much more manageable from a budget situation. And you see by about 2031, it reaches its absolute peak and then starts to fall off pretty significantly over time. And this is essentially, for those members of the public that haven't seen this, essentially what this means is if CalPERS continues, if, for example, they make a lot of money on their investments in any given year, it's possible that some of these payments is, are reduced. Unfortunately, they have not been making very much money compared to pre-recession. And what is more likely to occur is we, they will fall short of investment guidelines and we will maybe see some increases in, in those years, 2025 through about 2030. So the most important thing when we were looking at this five-year financial forecast is whether we can weather the storm and get through the end of 2025 without dipping below the 13% reserve mark that you've set. And it does appear, all things being constant, that we will get to that point. Keep in mind, this chart is agency-wide UAL cost. This chart is general fund only estimates. And so we have a fairly heavily burdened general fund in comparison to some other communities, but you can see, so you can see that, you know, nearly three-quarters of our costs are general fund obligations. So here's some final recommendations and I'm happy to answer any questions. It's critical for Riverbanks for ongoing and future financial success that we keep moving forward and working with private developers on our, on our projects. That level of growth is very important to be able to maintain services. It is not a myth when you hear people in Riverbanks say that Crossroads has saved Riverbank from a retail financial perspective because it is a humongous portion of our general fund revenues. We are in the process of actually already reviewing some of our fee structures to make sure that we're capturing costs appropriately. Obviously, every year we're, we're reviewing operational expenses to make sure that we're maximizing our cost savings where possible. Maricela and I do quarterly monitoring of, of revenues and expenditures just to see if there's any anomalies that happen, which happens sometimes. The anomalies more recently though have been positive anomalies where we have, you know, 15% more in sales tax than we, we were projecting. Continue prudent spending practices is super important, especially from a consultant perspective, to make sure that we're using consultants who do really good work for us, but also are not cheap sparingly. Continue funding strategic one-time expenditures with one-time monies. So council's been excellent at this. When you have one-time monies, you've picked projects that you think are really important and you use those monies one time and you don't expect that they're coming back. One of the examples of that is the, is the cannabis revenues. And begin planning for future recessions. You know, it's sort of, we're in an economy where everybody's sort of just waiting for the ball to drop. And it makes it very difficult because we feel like we just now have emerged out of the recession. So hopefully we get another couple of years before that. And, and that's really the majority of it. I'm going to leave these slides up in case the, for future council consideration, but be happy to answer any questions and/or entertain any comments.
In our original five-year plans, we had looked at some of our external threats. One thing we should do is international and national threats that are out there, including China, Russia, Iran. Any one of those could be explosive and it could cause our economy to stall and go down. We also have external threats from the national and the state on unfunded mandates that although, for example, stormwater. The new developments buying stormwater for their projects, but we still have to get the rest. So we're going to need the, and that would either be general fund or that would be, we need a 218 to have the citizens tax themselves for stormwater. And if we don't, then we'll be, start paying fines for each contaminant, $25,000 a day. That's not something I want to do in the near future. The structural deficit is quite disturbing, even though we are doing well in it, there will be a time when that structural deficit will be overly consuming. We haven't addressed some of the issues at the governor and what we have to do, which will affect our general fund, which is homelessness. That's something that we have to plan for and we have to start either acquiring funds from outside agencies or start using our general fund. Because if we don't, then those Americans that are out there on the streets are going to remain there. And we as Americans should work together to get rid of this burden, including the homelessness for those single families, especially single mothers, living in garages or on couches. We're down about 25% of staffing. We haven't addressed that. If we go to 100% staffing, where would we be?
So no surprise to anybody, the mayor and I had this conversation earlier today and he asked me to calculate if we, let's just take the police department as an insular example because they're only general fund paid. If we funded an additional seven officers, which by our calculation puts us about to the one to 1,000 ratio, just about, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, of 1.25 to 1.5 million dollars.
Additional?
Yearly. So it, it's a really important point because when you look at the reserves, they feel nice, but if we were staffing fully in safety alone, I mean, it's gone in a year or two years. So, you know, chief's talked about it a lot. They do an excellent job with, with limited resources and one of the lower staffing ratios in the, in the county, but it is an item that we have to address.
Well, I wasn't finished.
Yes, sir.
So we have to continue to look for other sources of income. We, I'm just going to say we gave away one, $240,000 a year. We can't do that. We also have to work with the county to correct the upside-down tax sharing agreement on property taxes. So without additional funding sources, that deficits, structural deficit will get us in the end, even if we don't have a recession. So we need to understand the finances that we have and we need to understand how we can get more for the, we can put in safety funds, take care of our, our staffing shortages of safety, but we also have to take a look at our staffing shortages in the financial planning and community services. If we don't staff these fully as we grow, then we are contracting, giving away money outside trying to get professional services at a higher rate. So this is good, just letting us know, but it's not telling how we're going to get to where we need to go. And thank Mayor Selig for her hard work. Comments?
I just had a quick question about Crossroads West. Just for clarification, when this was created, was Crossroads West, do we kind of think about what property taxes would be included in that or no?
It's, we, we considered and discussed whether or not we should add in some projections based on sort of reasonable bare minimum development, like if it just got off to a snail's pace. But it's incredibly difficult for us to forecast because we don't know whether, at this point, I really don't know whether residential will sort of start the project first and we'll mainly see single-family homes for a while, or if commercial's going to be out first, out of the gates. And so what I, what the mayor and I were discussing actually earlier today is that Crossroads West's success is critical, not only to making sure that we can eliminate those red numbers, but to do what he just mentioned, which is to bring appropriate staff on to service those folks that are coming into town.
And Crossroads West will pay for itself, but we still have to generate funding for the rest of the city that is not, you know, having a CFD. From the public, anyone wish to comment? Former council member?
As former council member and mayor at one point in time. I remember sitting up there and being very stressed out with a forecast just like this, looking at 7% and even a 3% if I got the numbers right. Mayor, correct me if I don't.
You do.
And I just want to say, those numbers on there, we all should be very proud of that and good job, so, with the reserves I was talking about.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Any additional comments? Oh, here comes one. I move fast, John.
John, I'm in City of Riverbank. The one concern I've got, and Vice Mayor Uribe and I have talked about this, is the homeless situation and how funds are being thrown at it. And I would hope that the council would think long and hard and get down to real specifics about what kind of money we are going to throw at the homeless problem and what possible solutions there are. Thank you.
And I was going to mention that, can I, is that okay if I make a comment?
Yeah.
I was going to actually mention this at the mayor's nonprofit meeting on the 30th. So if anybody's interested in attending that meeting, I will be giving an update on this, the Riverbank city's path to that.
And we do have a plan. We came up with a very good plan last year and we, we had been thinking we were going to get funding through round one. We were bypassed, round two, we're being bypassed. So I'm going to, back to DCA at the end of March and in April, I have a meeting with Ben Carson, true, I do, head of HUD. And we're going to talk about what funding I require for the city, or the city requires for the homeless situation, affordable housing, follow-on housing for the homeless, and also how we can, you know, make it work. We tried getting people off the streets by building that 72-unit affordable housing. I wanted to get all the single mothers off the couch, out of the garages, but only two qualified for it. So we have about 22 families still left on the couch. We need to get them off. We need to get them into housing where they can have a true family housing, family lifestyle. So there are plans. We have self-help enterprises that is kind of helping and some of the others that can, hopefully we'll start getting plans before you, John, on what we can for apartments, housing, et cetera. But we do have a plan.
Diana Garcia, I just want to say that the City of Riverbank is doing an excellent job with the money that they have to provide housing. We went out this week and did the point-of-time count for the homeless, the homeless count census, and we did not see the same individuals that we seen last year, the same individual, we seen different individuals. And our count was very low compared to any other city of homeless people that we have. So I commend the City of Riverbank for helping its residents get rehoused.
Any other comments? Bring it back to the council, any other comments? Thank you. We move on to item 6.3, request to accept the person, proposals submitted by SS Consulting for coordination of the Riverbank 2020 Cheese and Wine Festival and authorized state. for coordination of the Riverbank 2020 Cheese and Wine Festival, and authorize staff to enter into contract negotiations.
Thank you, Mayor. We are very excited to present to you an opportunity to change up the Wine and Cheese Festival a little bit. And so we took council's direction at the meeting a couple months ago, and Sue went out and spoke with a number of different festival professionals and promoters, and interviewed and saw presentations from a number of them. Thanks, sorry. And we were very pleased that Sue's top choice was interested in the event. They're here this evening, and she's going to step you through some of the finer points of that.
So members, mayor, members of the council, we spent the last couple of months, as Sean mentioned, doing some research and evaluation, and we were really excited at first to look at a recreation coordinator position for special events, but after thinking it through and looking at the timeframe around the holidays, we really didn't have sufficient time to find the right person. And after researching it a little bit, I think our compensation that we had planned out was a bit low for what we would be looking for. We had, so we had some concerns regarding the compensation required to get the quality person, and also adding the whole festival along with the cheese and wine component is, was a lot, for someone to just come into that maybe wasn't exactly the right person. So we were feeling that that maybe wasn't as good of an idea as we thought in the beginning, at least for this, this year coming up. Also, as Sean mentioned, we did have a lot more interest in other agencies that wanted to contract with us than we had in the past. So, also ones that had proven experience, and when they submitted their proposal, it was reasonable, and we figured that might be a smoother transition for this next year. So one of the groups that we met with was SS Consulting and some other daughter team. They do the Almond Blossom Festival, the Soaring Over Rip and Hot Air Balloon Festival, One World Cultural Festival, variety of concerts, parades, just a lot of experience. The proposal that they submitted was for 20,000, or 15,000 of gross revenue, whichever is greater. And this would be inclusive of the vendor recruitment and the cheese and wine component. So what we were paying in the past was more than that, because we were subcontracting through Chris Riki Presents for the vendors, or we were doing the vendor work, actually, in the last couple of years. And for the cheese and wine component was an additional, so we were paying over 22,000 just from the get-go. So this organization also has a good understanding of challenges and the potential of the festival. So, what we'd like to do tonight is request that we accept the proposal from SS Consulting, bring back at the next council meeting a contract for approval, as well as the lease of the city streets, as we usually do. The thing that we need to do separately is look at the security, because now we've always made the festival self-sufficient, but adding the increased security that we all think we need isn't going to be sustainable through the festival budget. But we know we need to do that, and look at that, and fund that through other funds, so. Any questions? And we do have Tamara Spade, who's from SS Consulting here. If you have any questions for her, she'd be glad to answer them.
Just out of, just out of my own curiosity, before I decide on this one, are we not pursuing the event, that special event coordinator anymore, then?
Not at this time.
Okay.
One of the, one of the concepts that we've had is, is some of the concerns that have been raised a number of years in a row from council about the event, we were interested to see, because we haven't had experience with another festival promoter, how those are addressed under this scenario. Because the resources and technical knowledge that a company like SS Consulting can bring is difficult to get in an individual that's ready to do that at day one. It's something we're going to have to train into someone, and so something that Sue and I have sort of thought about is, perhaps as, if we have a successful event this year, it may make sense to fund a position that learns the Wine and Cheese Festival over time, and we can determine if it really makes sense for them to take it over. It may be that the festival goes really well, and we're just very happy with the, with this, and it's a better scenario for us.
I know myself, I am very excited. When I read this, and I was told by Sean that you had found somebody, several people, actually, I'm excited, and I'm anxious to work with them, and with you, and see what we can do this year.
I've got, got a couple of questions. One, how is this going, if we go with this party, is it going to take as much time from the recreational department as it did in the past with Chris Riki? Or is that going to be about the same? How's that going to be?
No, my plan is to be less involved, although we're going to have definitely oversight and be there for support, but this company has a lot of experience, and I think that they're going to be able to operate without a lot of micromanaging.
And are they going, are you, is the rec department still going to have to go out and find private supporters like you did with Chris Riki? Or are they going to try to get more of those, you know, from them, their end?
Their proposal states they're going to get a lot of sponsors. I think that we should stick with the sponsors that we have, at least some of them, just to supplement the festival, because I think it's, it's a good, it's a good supplement. Our profit ratio to revenue is not huge, so I think we need those sponsors. I think maybe we can put maybe one or two of those sponsors in other places as well.
Okay, thank you.
Balance it.
Just a question from me about the beer booths. This will incorporate the beer booths too, or is that going to be done separately, or what?
It will incorporate the beer booths as well. And we haven't talked through all of the details yet, but we'll be putting that together and coming back with more information when we come with the contract as well. But the nonprofits will be included, that's something that we've talked about, we want that. SS Consulting would want to do that as well, because that's important.
And one of the concepts that we, Sue and I have kind of discussed is, some of the things that we feel like have, have been the major issues that we've had to work through each and every year previously, we hope to kind of shine a light on those this year. So for example, I met with the downtown businesses just before Christmas, and one of the things they asked is, hey, can we please have a meeting with this new person, whoever that may be, and explain to them the things that we think are really important, or the things that drive us crazy about the festival? That kind of thing is, I think, what we're really looking forward to, because it can kind of avoid some of those traditional issues we've run into.
For those of you who may have been at the League of California Conference, the City of Riverside made a presentation on their city of, or Festival of Lights, and their security, and how they put separately the security issues from the festival. And they have a, California has a incident center that they help with a fusion center that I know the sheriff has the capability of providing, so we could reduce some of the security costs while having increased security without having the, I like the presence, so, but anyway, that should be a separate cost, be provided by the city through the general fund, through our safety fund. So I wouldn't be concerned about that. And you never tell someone you're going to do a contract, oh, we paid more than that. That's not a good negotiation standpoint.
Okay.
Is there any, any more?
Just one, I'd actually like to hear from SS Consulting, just kind of hear their vision, what they, what they like to plan for this event.
So good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tamara Spade, and very excited about the opportunity, and when I heard from Sue, we've been doing this for a long time, just the Almond Blossom Festival, myself, about six years. I started the cultural festival in Tracy last year, and 4th of July events, parades, I think we've done it all. So our vision is obviously to grow this festival, and to be able to build some of these relationships on the, with the businesses to, because I think everybody's involved, should be involved, and, you know, in the community, we want them to come out, we want more sponsors, we want to be able to turn this into a family fun event. I can go way back, because some of the people that have offered to jump in and help us this year were part of this festival for many years, and said, you know, there used to be a lot of alcohol, and a lot of things that, the reputation wasn't so great. But we want it to be, you know, again, family-friendly, but also where people can come, they can do wine tasting, they can do cheese tasting, and have that here. You know, we've heard it's been kind of missing in the past. So there's just a lot of things that we want to bring to this festival, but absolutely grow it, and make it successful for Riverbank, and get the reputation back. So, thank you.
Any public comment? Any public comment? Say none? I bring it back to this council for consideration.
I mean, we accept the item as stated?
I second.
We're accepting that the Parks and Recreation negotiate a contract for approval, and we have a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.4, resolution authorizing the purchase of a property located at 3021 High Street, APN 132-003-022, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents to complete the sale, and authorization appropriation of $76,000 from the sewer and water operational funds for purchase of the property.
Thank you, Mayor. So truth be told, I almost never do PowerPoints, as you know, and I certainly never do them myself, but I did this one. And so just be ready to be amazed. So this is a very simple item. City council has given direction to me previously that we were interested in this property. This property is located on High Street at the very southern end, where on the left-hand side, for those who don't know, that's our corporation yard, and then you have Scout Hall and Scout Park there. This property burned down about a, almost a couple of years ago now, and the gentleman that previously owned it had, had passed, and it has been in various states of probate ever since. We made a first pass at purchasing this property about a year ago, weren't able to get a deal. Things have changed a little bit since then. I received authorization to make an offer, the, so we discussed that. Since, oh, and so since it burned down in 18, obviously there's been no improvements, and council member Campbell has mentioned to me a number of times, that it's a very irritating eyesore there. There's no money, there's no people to go after to get them to clean it up, and so it's been just sort of sitting there. We, it's been fenced, but other than that, it's just a burnt-down home. Here are the deal points. City offered 75,000 minus the cost to clear. The folks that are representing in probate said there's no money in the estate to clear the property, and so we've reduced our offer to just over $59,000. And if approved by council, this goes to the probate court to consider approval. We, we're going to come back and have a further discussion with council about the best use for this property, but initially the concept is, one of the things we, we are lacking is we have no office space really for our water department. We have one office for a supervisor, and then we have used some common area essentially for, for the computer stations that they need. And so it's been an unmet need. We simply need to have at least modular office space for, for our water department, and just more office space in general in Public Works. If you've been to the Public Works corp yard, I'm going to go back here, you notice the shop, which is a large white building at the top, is very, very close to the Michael's office, which is right across the way on the right. And one of the concepts we've discussed, that's right, yeah, Norma, that is we may move the administration building, and then a separate office building to this property, upgrade the site, create parking and security, which would then free up quite a bit of space on site there. Any council member or member of the public, for that matter, that would like to tour the Public Works corp yard, please contact my office, but we can show you pretty quickly that there's very little room left on this property. And so it may, it may free up some, some land for us to use for other equipment storage purposes. So those are essentially the, the ideas. We'll bring a conceptual design. Prior to the meeting, Mr. Neal mentioned to me a concern that he have, which I'd like to address, which is that we've proposed that this be funded from water and sewer capital funds, and from a budgetary perspective, my recommendation is to fund it that way, because Public Works is primarily water and sewer. There is also streets department in that, but to be honest, there's very little money for capital purchases that is not already being expended on roadway projects. Most of what Public Works does, aside from that, is water and sewer, and so the most appropriate place to fund it is out of your capital program in water and sewer. Mr. Neal felt that that is not a fair use of those funds, and it should be funded out of general fund. That is absolutely something you can do. From a budgetary perspective, though, it really usually makes sense to fund those out of your enterprise funds, when that's what the property would be used as. So those are my thoughts there, but any direction you give, I'll be happy to implement.
Questions or comments to Sean?
Say none? Go to the public.
I'm going to just add mine, because I had the same question or comment that Mr. Neal brought up. I believe the, the funding is part of the POP 2018 that we pay our water and sewer fees for, so I'm just going to add my same comments to Mr. Neal. I don't think it's appropriate either.
Any other public comments? Thank you on that. Bring it back to the council for consideration.
Mayor, there is also one typographical error, a couple typographical errors that were in the escrow documents that we've since fixed, but the, to be very clear, it's 3012 High Street is the address of the property, 3012, not 3021, the numbers were transposed. We actually already own 3021, that's the Scout Hall.
Ah. That is good.
Can I go and make a motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve item 6.4 with the correction to the address.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? None? We have a motion to approve item 6.4, and a second, where the property located at 3012 High Street. Is the APN the same? John, is the APN the same?
The APN is correct.
Okay.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.5, adjustment to 2020 regular city council meetings scheduled.
Another PowerPoint that I did of one slide. So council considers cancellations every year at this meeting. We have in the past, well, pretty much since I've been here, and my predecessor as well, typically cancel four dates. The summer dates are usually to coordinate staff and council vacations during the summer, and then, but this year is actually a little different. This is an election year, and the filing period essentially, and Annabelle, correct me if I'm wrong, begins in July and ends at that August date, essentially, right?
Correct.
Close to it. And this is incredibly busy time for the city clerk, because she has filing papers, that people are coming in and getting all their paperwork in order, and so we hope that this will also kind of manage that workflow as we go through 2020's elections. November 24th is the Thanksgiving week holiday, and November 22nd, obviously, is just preceding Christmas. So unless council would like to make any changes, our recommendation is canceling those
Any comments? The July one is to complete the year-end and start working on the five-year forecast. That's what it was originally designed when we first said, hey, let's cut that one out. So we can have an earlier five-year plan.
Yes.
Thank you. Any objection to these cancellations? Anyone from the public wishes to make comment on this? Say none. I bring it back.
I make a motion we approved item six point five.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and second on item six point five.
Council members, Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Staff comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Only one quick comment. There is a number of, every single one of the management staff and every staff person are very proud to work for this team, and they're a very good group. And I get the opportunity every so often to kind of highlight one person. Person I'd like to thank tonight is Kathleen Kleek in Development Services. She has a handful, an armful, of road projects, all sort of convening at once, and some are capital projects, and others are crosswalk lights, and others are things that come up that we had not previously anticipated or figured out how we're going to fund. And one of the things I really value about her is she just finds a way to make it happen. And so just wanted to thank her publicly for that.
Councilmember Fossey?
I just want to remind everybody that we do have an opening on the Budget Advisory Committee. In fact, I think we have several. I just was looking up on the website. If you go to the Budget Advisory Committee, you can find out how to apply and get your application in because we're going to be looking at these financials and making sure we stay on track. So I look forward to several applications coming in. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
At a meeting of the League of Cities Transportation and Communication Committee that I attended last week, one of the big things that the state is trying to do is find a substitution for the gas tax. They're looking at a mileage tax and some other things, and they're going to be aggressively this year looking harder to get this done. There's a lot of difficulties with the different ways of proposals so far. As I learn more about it, I will keep you updated, and you should be paying attention to news if you start hearing things about it.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
I also attended the California League of Cities Policy Committee, and I'm on the Community Policy Committee. And our work plans are that we will be looking and focusing on libraries, children, childcare, youth, national disasters and community resiliency, parks and open space, senior issues and adults with disabilities, mental and physical health, wellness, and well-being for children and at-risk young adults. And I also attended the Truth Act Forum, Community Forum, which was held last night in Modesto. And Sheriff Dersky and Supervisor Withrow and a couple other supervisors were there for Stanislaus County. And they were, they're trying to get the word out regarding ICE procedures and what to expect. And so they're going out to different communities, different cities, trying to explain so people have a better understanding of what to expect when immigration issues come into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So January twenty-first, I attended a roundtable with Congressional Rep. Josh Harder at the Salvation Army Shelter, and urged our rep to look into ways to make affordable housing affordable, partnering with the state and adjusting sequel fees was my recommendation. I'd like to thank staff and residents for participating in this year's pick count. On January twenty-third, there was a total of twenty homeless that were counted for. And then I was again reminded at the Census twenty-twenty training about the importance of an accurate pick count, because that information is automatically forwarded to the census. Concilio put on that training, they're going to have another one soon, and I'll share that information with the staff to put that out to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. On the census, in your voters' ballots, are the dates that are very important for the census? Census Day is one April. And if you want to participate and get your information in, they won't come knocking on your door. But if you don't, they'll come knocking on your door. And a lot of people do not want to have the feds come and knocking on your door, so please, when it comes census time, turn in your census. We should post that on our website and then make a reminder. Okay? Yeah, great. I did not attend the League, although I should have. I instead went back to Washington to first talk to the Department of the Army with Secretary Kramer. And the FOCET will be out for consideration, public comment, on the third of February. You have a thirty-day public comment period, and then those comments will be collected. My concern with that is that when it goes out, regulatory agencies have a tendency to not do anything with it until just before it's due, and then ask for an extension. My intent is to go see Governor Newsom, and they're arranging that for me now, to talk to him and have his regulatory teams look at it immediately. I don't care what the comments are, I don't want them delayed. The sooner we get them back, the sooner I'll be back in Washington to talk again with Secretary Kramer. What we want is a long-term lease or the CDR for the governor's concurrence to be published as soon as possible. The secretaries, he had the secretary, he had someone who spoke, who I'd never met before, and the project manager. Project manager said nothing, the secretary said nothing, but the person who spoke said we're not going to do anything until March of twenty-twenty-one. And that's not right. So if we can get at least clear direction of what we need to do from the FOCET, we will then go back to Kramer and say, let's make this happen a lot sooner. Amedis can still walk. They have six projects of this size, of two-hundred million dollars or more, that they want to kick-starting. They would like our place, but they can walk if there's no clear ownership of the land. So that's extremely important for us. Secondly, I met with Secretary Carson for HUD. He's invited me back to talk money for homeless and for affordable housing. So we need to have a good plan for when my return in, at the end of the first week, well, I think it's the third of April. There is a lot of innovation coming on out. One is something called crews, and the city could contract with it, it'd be very cheap to have an autonomous vehicle, or to go into the housing of those who need it to help complete their last mile and first mile when they go to use public transportation to shopping, especially for the elderly and those in need, and try to complete some of our unfunded or unmet transit needs. And I'm curious about the Environmental Learning Center. Sue, you're going to have to give me some knowledge on that. In the presentation? Okay. Thank you. With that, we go to closed session, consisting of item eight point one, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight, property zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five through zero zero seven, agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator Amedis Inc., under negotiation price, terms, subpayment, or both. Item eight point two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code five four nine five six point nine, warrant potential case. Item eight point three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine alpha. Name of case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and DOES one dash twenty. Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CV nineteen zero zero four four zero two. Prior to going into closed session, the public has a limit of five minutes to comment on the closed session items. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on the closed session items? Say none. We adjourn to closed session.
So in that way, adjourn to closed session.
Thank you.
And I will reconvene the City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meeting on Tuesday, January 28. Item 9.1, report from closed session on item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiations, Ametis Inc., direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report from closed session on item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, anticipated legal litigation, one potential case. Direction has been provided to staff. And on item 9.3, report from closed session on item 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, existing litigation, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and DOES 1-20. Direction has been provided to staff. The next City Council meeting will be February 11th. This meeting is now adjourned.